Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the regular meeting of the Ojai City Council and Ojai Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency, our meeting of June 25, 2013. Thank you all for being here. This is a special occasion tonight. We're going to have a nice presentation in a minute. So, thank you for being here. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Laura?
Here.
Councilmember Clapp, present. Councilmember Smith is absent this evening. Mayor Pro Tem Strobel?
Present.
Mayor Blatts?
Here. And if Mayor Pro Tem Strobel could please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pardon me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I said, we have a nice ceremony tonight for, as a presentation, we're going to be awarding the 2012 Lifetime Achievement Award in the arts. This is an award that is decided upon by our Arts Commission, and they deliberate long and hard over it, and they always seem to come up with recipients that truly deserve it. We have the Chair of the Arts Commission here tonight, Christine Golden. And Christine, did you want to say a few words? I wanted to say a few words about our recipient.
I would like you to give Michael Emerson his due notice.
Okay, Michael. The recipient of tonight's award is Kim Maxwell. So, if you'd like to say a few words about Kim?
Well, we, as you say, did talk at some length about the possible candidates for this award, and it's a difficult task because we live in Ojai. And because we live in Ojai, we are surrounded by art and remarkable artists. And each year, the fact that the city honors the art of the community and the artists is, I think, a singular mark of how much we value art in this community. Each year, this award is presented to someone who has made not just an individual contribution or achieved some sort of honor, but who, over an extended period of time, has made a really significant contribution to the cultural life of our community. And the Art Commission this year is very, very pleased to recommend to the council Kim Maxwell for this award.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. I couldn't agree with you more. I first met Kim, it has to have been maybe 20 years ago, when I was the Chairman of Ojai Living Treasures along with Sanford Drucker, and Kim was one of the living treasures. And I found her to be delightful then, and she continues to be delight. I have a few bullet points about Kim that I think are quite interesting. The first one is, over 20, for over 20 years, Kim has been heavily involved in the youth and the arts in Ojai, as a teacher and a director. And one of the, one of the very strong things about any vibrant community is our attention that we pay to culture and also to the youth. She is one of the co-founders of Theater 150 and served as artistic director for 11 years. She is also on the co-founders, one of the co-founders, of the Ojai Playwrights Conference and continues as a director of their youth programs. And the sheer number of her contributions is staggering. She's the Director of 32 main stage productions, 26 benefits, 73 readings, and over 25, over 2,500 pieces of original material produced and over 120 workshop productions. In addition, Kim has found time for hundreds of hours of volunteer work in the community, and her achievement more than merits the honor that we're going to confer upon her today. And Kim, I can't, I'm, I couldn't be more pleased than to be able to give you this Lifetime Achievement Award. And if you could come forward, please, we have a city medallion that we're going to be presenting to you. Right here. I'd like to place that on you. And along with that, along with that, that is where the medallion, and then also a city pin. And thank you very much. Congratulations. Now, we'd love to have you say a couple of words.
I'd prefer a couple of words, but it feels strange to stand this way with my back to you, and it feels strange. Can I stand over there?
Take the podium, because without being at the microphone, the people at home can't hear you.
Okay.
So, if you could please stand there.
All right. Sorry if you turn my back to you.
Thank you, Jim Lashley. It's always important to be heckled at a Lifetime Achievement Award. Well, hello, beautiful people that I adore, and the ones behind me as well. Thank you so much for coming tonight. This award and this town means more to me than I can say. There are so many people to thank that if I started, it would easily take up the entire city council meeting, and I do not want to be remembered as the award recipient that was forcibly removed from the podium. So, in lieu of that, if you could please turn to the person next to you, I understand it's awkward, but please do it, because the person next to you more than likely has something to do with my being here and this award. Look them straight in the eye, take a nice deep breath. Now, please say "thank you." Okay, that was from me. That said, from the bottom of my heart, I would like to thank our mayor, Paul Blatts, and our city council. I'd also like to thank the Ojai Arts Commission, helmed by the very lovely Christine Golden. Lily and Woody, that's them. I would be lost without you. Thank you for being the best, most patient, and proportionately respectful children in the world. You are the best thing that ever happened to me. To my sweetheart, my friends, my family of the north, my students, my neighbors, my comrades in the arts, the following is my attempt to put towards how I feel about you and this town. I am a townie. We are the townies. We are teachers and students and council members and retired and semi-retired and just starting. We are baristas and singer-songwriters and contractors and activists and therapists and gardeners. We are mothers and fathers and children and gay and straight and angry and scared and funny and ill-tempered and just beautiful to the bone. We are your neighbors and friends and are restricted to shopping in one of three grocery stores if you don't include Rainbow Bridge or Farmer and the Cook. We have fundraisers almost every day because we believe. We believe in fairies and open space and search dogs and music and plays and films and poetry and Charman. And Pasty Lady. Oh, Pasty Lady, I miss you. Please come home. We argue and fight and are dragged kicking and screaming from city council meetings. We rail against 550-acre mega dumps and gravel trucks and passive-aggressive oil companies. We chain ourselves to oak trees, conduct didgeridoo healing circles in the park, and celebrate Mardi Gras as if we invented it, which we didn't. But that's okay. We take our dogs everywhere, and if you ask us why, we will look you straight in the eye and say, "It's a service dog," even if it's not. We sometimes force each other to have the Fourth of July on the Fifth of July because some of us have to go to church. We proudly celebrate Martin Luther King Junior Day even though there are only three black people in the entire town. We hold up traffic in the middle of the post office crosswalk to ask each other, "How is the divorce going?" We break for squirrels. We close our restaurants at 7:00. We protest at the Y, and we make our own clothes from the organic hemp we grow in our backyards. Sorry. We each support a minimum of 14 Kickstarter campaigns, start sentences with things like, "In my past life," and have the highest massage therapist-to-civilian ratio in the So, bite me, Sedona. Our vortex could kick your vortex's butt any day. We have an East West Valley, a 15-mile bike path that runs all the way to the beach, and Reese Witherspoon. Well, not anymore, but we used to. We are the home of the Ojai Pixie Orange, lavender lemonade, Xena's Gypsy Tea, and Meditation Mount. And come August, we launch Pulitzer Prize-winning playwrights from the top of the Denison grade with such velocity that their premieres land at the Geffen Playhouse on Broadway and at the West End Theater in London. That's right. We will stand beside you in 104-degree heat, painting your ugly mismatched chairs collected from dumpsters and basements black, so that they will match for the grand opening of the little theater you have constructed from the remains of an abandoned pool hall. We will sit through five-hour board meetings and hold a place for you while you learn and find your legs as a leader. We will drop your kids off at school when you are sick, and we will pick them up when you are late. We will send you clippings from every article in which you appear. And when your mother dies, we will leave a bag of oranges on your doorstep because we are concerned about your vitamin C level. We are townies. We are compassionate and petty and selfless and kind. We are steadfast and noble and loyal and oh, so fragile. Oh, my, we are a mess. The biggest, most beautiful mess I have ever seen, and I wouldn't change a single thing. I love you and thank you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. That was, that was absolutely fabulous.
Stop you in the middle of the street to ask you how your divorce is going.
We're going to take a little bit of a break for people that have been here for the --
Come join us in the bow.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to, yeah, they'll be out in a second. There they go. Before we start our formal agenda, I just wanted to remind everyone here tonight, as well as in the public watching this, that the council has approved a Fiscal Policy Budget Committee public member, and we still have an opening for that person, and we would like to have as many people apply for that position as we can. The Fiscal Policy Budget Committee is comprised of representatives from the city council, that's two of us, the city treasurer, the city manager, and the city finance director. The responsibilities of the Fiscal Policy Budget Committee are to review fiscal issues, trends, and audit findings in detail and provide appropriate recommendations to the city council. The city council would like to appoint a public member. The public member must be a resident of the city of Ojai, be able to read and understand budget and financial reports, and be available to meet as needed three or four times a year. The city clerks department is currently recruiting for the public member. If you are interested, I am asking you to please apply, and if you'd like more information, you can contact the city clerks department at 805-646-5581, extension 120, or visit the city's website at www.cioj.ca.us/citygovernment/citycommissions. This is a really important position for us because we feel that it's important for us to have as much transparency to the public as we possibly can. And while nothing is happening behind closed doors during these, these committee meetings, it seems to us as a city council, that's why we approved it, that a public member would be an excellent person to have there so that there would be true transparency. So, please, anyone in the public that's interested, I really do encourage you to apply. The next part of our agenda is that time when we receive public communications. Public communications is a time set aside during the meeting for members of the public to address the city council on items of city business other than those which are scheduled on our agenda. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the council and will generally be referred to staff or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken by us. Persons wishing to address the council are asked to fill out a speaker's card prior to the beginning of our meeting, and comments, please limit them to three minutes or less. Is there anyone in the audience today? I don't have any speaker's cards. Are there any speaker's cards over there?
No.
Okay. You'd like to speak? Come forward, please. If you could state your name and your address, that would be greatly appreciated.
My name is Bob Landau. The address is 999 East Ojai Avenue, and I'm here tonight to nudge the city when it comes to a crosswalk that's on East Ojai Avenue near Park Road. It's not up to code when it comes to the Americans with Disability Act. On the north side of the street is a disability ramp, but on the south side, there is none. So, I'm urging you to do something about it and also in contact with Us Williams to see if he can nudge the --
Caltrans?
Caltrans. So, that's, that's all I have to say.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Mr. Clark, will you make a note of that request and pass it on to, I see Mr. Grant back there, our Director of Public Works?
It's in volume pressure.
Okay. There you go. We're going to be doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience that wants to address us tonight? All right. Seeing no one, we're going to move on to our consent calendar. Are there any questions? Comments?
I'd like to discuss the item concerning the grand jury reports, which is item C.
C.
Any other items that the council wants to discuss before a motion is heard? Yep. Okay. Anything else? All right. Councilwoman Smith?
Yes, thank you very much. The item I'm concerned with was approve the response to the grand jury report on Ventura County Library. I certainly approve the report. For those who had trouble following what our report was, is basically, if you go to page 1-39, you see they have a number, and then they have a finding, and then they have a status outcome. So, the status outcome is actually what our city manager has responded to the grand jury inquiry on item F-1-01. So, you know, you go through this, and it's used book sales, provide extra income. However, not all the libraries take part in this venture. Ojai appears to be most successful due to its volunteer base. Okay, so what do you answer to this? The city's very grateful for our volunteers. It goes on and on along this line. So, I commend our city manager. We have nothing to be anything but proud of, but that basically is the response. What I do object to highly is the grand jury report in which on page, which, there it is, on page 1-57, there is a report, a final report, from an organization called the Reason Foundation, which you'll find on the upper right, February 2011. I don't know if this was solicited by the grand jury or if it was just sent by the Reason Foundation. It has to do with Annual Privatization Report 2010, Local Government Privatization. It is written by the Reason Foundation, which, if you look them up, is basically a think tank that is not listed as conservative or liberal, but listed as libertarian, along with the Cato Institute. They are main sources of money come from the, was it KOCH? The Koch Brothers, exactly. I think their budget is 6.7 million, of what 6 million is donations. I don't know where the questions that were asked of the, of the Ventura County Library have anything to do with this report. So, I would like for our city manager to include in the report a question by Councilmember Carol Smith as to why this, this report by this foundation was included. It has nothing to do with the Ventura County Library services. The next thing I'd like to point out is that the grand jury in our county is basically a group that is, purpose is to make sure that government accounting of taxpayers' money is spent efficiently, and it has to do with special districts, any branch of government, which I applaud. When they decide to do a report, I don't know what the standards are. I notice if you go to their website, they will do a report on the Moore Park College Nursing Program, which got 100% in every possible category. The only thing that I could think would have triggered that report was a student who perhaps had flunked out of the program. So, I'm curious as to how they decide what issues to report on, nor do their report require anything other than a requirement for the city manager or the manager of the water district to respond, period. So, they have no real power. I come from New York State, where grand juries are very powerful. This one, you know, we have a grand jury that's volunteers only the year that they serve, and I'm not sure what the makeup of it, of it is, but the fact that they would even include a report by this foundation, which has nothing to do with the subject, I object to. And I object to spending taxpayers' money on it. I'm done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smith. Your remarks are duly noted, and Mr. Clark, I would ask you to include those remarks in your report to the grand jury. Any other comments? Okay. Item?
Item F. It's about libraries. Well?
I apologize. Item F is about the authorizing of Ventura County to collect library special tax for the fiscal year 2013-14. That's a special tax that the city of Ojai citizens voted for an assessment to fund the library. And every year, we seem to have approximately $40,000 or more in the city's account from levying this tax. And I, every year, ask this question, and I still don't understand the answer. Why don't we give this to the library? We're collecting it for the library. Doesn't it belong to the library? So, I would really like to have that maybe explained to me again, because maybe this time I get it.
Well, we could give it to the library if they made a request for a specific purpose for which the tax is collected. It's also prudent to have a fund balance available in the event that expenses proceed faster than collections and, and we don't have a cash, a cash flow problem. So, it's, it's not unusual in a situation like this to have a small fund balance as a cushion, but also, we do have the opportunity to address special needs that come up during the course of the year, as long as those needs are consistent with the purposes that the voters approved the tax for.
Okay, so the tax is for us to use in our, in a discretionary manner to give to the library? Or is the tax for the library? That's, I think, where I'm confused.
It, it's a, it's a, it's a tax that's, that's collected under the power of the city based on the voter's approval, and we contract with the library for additional services using pretty much all of it. The reason there's a fund balance is because some years, the amount collected has exceeded the amount spent by a little bit, but it's prudent to have a fund balance because sometimes you need it for cash flow and sometimes you need it for special needs. But we would, we would only --
I guess that still doesn't answer my question. My question, I guess I'm asking, what are the terms? I've never seen this.
Well, we, we can --
Does it say that this money is to be collected for the library? Does it say that the city's supposed to withhold it?
Yeah, we can, we could, we could get you a copy of --
I'd love to see it.
Sure.
Because I still, I must say, I still don't understand why it doesn't belong to the library.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I'd like to comment that the library tax allows our library to remain open for extended numbers of hours, and it goes for other expenditures. I was going to tell you something. It just --
Do you remember what I, because, you know, I don't get it. I don't get why it doesn't go to the library.
But it does go to the library. That's the only thing it can be spent on. And right now, depending on our share, the, the county library system determines our share for keeping our library open longer hours comes from that tax fund.
Isn't it also, was it also partly for purchasing books and other things as well? Not just a stamping? Do you remember?
Yes. Purchasing books is one of the purposes that it can be put to. So, there's, there's, in, in the authorizing document, there's a number of different purposes, and I, I don't recall what they all are, but I can certainly get the council a copy of that.
If you would, but it's not all purposes.
No.
It's not, it can't just be turned over to the library for any reason.
No.
There's some, some limitations on what they can use it for, and they need to come to the city and request the funds, and then we look at it and see whether or not it's authorized, and if it is, then we approve it.
Okay, so I guess one of, one of my questions is, do the current people who are heading the library know the parameters in which this money is available to them? Do they know they have to make a proposal?
I believe they do, yeah. And actually, there has been some conversation about the need to potentially in the future raise the tax because the, our contract doesn't actually cover the full cost of the services that are being provided to us. But yeah, the, the county librarian is very aware of the tax and, and its availability.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on any of the consent items? Then I'll entertain a motion.
So, move.
Second.
And that would be approval of the consent item with the modifications made to item C, correct? Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes. All right, we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. The first public hearing, item number two, is levying collections of assessments for lighting and landscaping district number one and number three for fiscal year 2013-2014. Mr. Clark?
Actually, item number two on the agenda, which we should do first, is the assessment for the Arcade Plaza Maintenance District.
Oh, I have that as number three.
Oh, do you? Okay.
Oh, dear. Was switched.
Amber mentioned she's had them switched or something.
Okay, well, let's do the lighting and landscape.
All right. Mr. Grant? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a public hearing for the levying collection of assessments for the lighting and landscape districts number one and three for fiscal year 2013-2014.
Actually, item number two on the agenda, which we should do first, is the assessment for the Arcade Plaza Maintenance District.
Oh, I have that as number three.
Oh, do you? Okay, well-
Oh, dear, it was switched.
Amber mentioned she's had them switched or something.
Okay, well, let's do the lighting and landscape.
All right. Mr. Grant.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a public hearing for the levying collection of assessments for the lighting and landscape districts number one and three for fiscal year two thousand thirteen fourteen. The districts were established in order to provide necessary funding for electricity and maintenance costs associated with the city's network of streetlights. On April twenty-third, the council approved the engineer's report for these districts and declared its intent to levy and collect these assessments without an increase and set the public hearing for tonight. As discussed in the administration report, expenditures are exceeding revenues. Please note the expenditures are expected to be slightly higher than mentioned in the administration report. It was mentioned at nine thousand four hundred forty, and we expect to be about fourteen thousand dollars in deficit this next fiscal year. We are exploring options to address this deficit, which would include, number one, seeking an increase in assessments, which must follow the Prop. 218 approval process. In two thousand seven, the city proposed an increase in assessments for districts one and three, which was rejected by the property owners. It's an expensive proposition to go out to vote for these increases with an outreach effort, ballot mailing, and counting, et cetera, to all the parcels within the city, which costs approximately ten thousand dollars to go out for that voting process. The City of Ventura recently attempted to increase their lighting district fees, and it was rejected as well. Seems to be a trend across California. And number two, another option to reduce the deficit would be to eliminate some of the existing light poles within city. Edison will remove poles that are existing for over ten years, and that would be pretty much every pole in the city. So that's an option we have that we're looking at. And also, we have an option of turning off some or all the streetlights from midnight to dawn, like a lot of cities do when most people don't need the lighting. And Edison has a special rate for that midnight-to-dawn effect. So these are all options we'll be looking at over the next fiscal year to see if anything would be reasonable for us to approach you with next year. The projected negative fund balance is in effect, covered by the general fund reserves. As a result, the amount of general fund reserves is actually lower by two hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars in accumulation over all these years that may otherwise have been available at this time. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Any questions by council of Mr. Grant?
Yes, Mayor Blatt, I have a couple of questions. Do we know how much we'll save on option two or three next year if we look into it? Or do we still need a response for medicine?
We're still looking at that. I mean, it really matters on which light poles we would eliminate. There are some parts or zones within the city that have very dense lighting, like the track, the Topa Topa Track, or the track behind Vons over at Descanso, and also out at Golden West. They have very dense lighting, so they probably have the best opportunity to reduce the density of the lighting. If you look in the city, it's really just a light at each one of the intersections, which is probably more applicable. But out at those denser tracks, they're at the intersections and they're very dense throughout the entire area. So it would matter how many lights we decided to remove and maybe an approach, an outreach approach, and whether that's acceptable to the community. And then the portion for the number three was to turn off the streetlights from midnight to dawn. No, we haven't got the number on that yet, but the rule of thumb is that two-thirds of the cost of the lights are for the maintenance and operation of the lights. I should say mostly maintenance and depreciation of the lights. One-third of the cost is for electricity. So if we saved roughly half the money on the electrical rate, that's, you know, approximately half of that one-third, so maybe ballpark, we haven't got the final number, maybe fifteen percent.
And then my other question is, you mentioned that in two thousand seven, the city proposed to increase an assessment for the district one and three, which would cover the whole city. Is there another mechanism to increase, or do we need the approval of the residents?
It's approval of the property owners. It's Prop. 218 requirement.
And so Edison is right now increasing their rates, but they don't have to go through a process like the city does?
Exactly. I think that's the problem, is hitting all lighting districts throughout the state.
So even if we were to look at options two and three, it's still in the future if Edison decides to up their rates, we're still going to be running into this issue, right?
Yes.
And this is all because of Prop. 218?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, you may have, you may have discussed this, and maybe I missed it, but two-thirds of the cost goes to the maintenance of the lighting fixtures, and pretty much citywide, ours are more than ten years old. So are we working with Edison to upgrade our standards in lights, which in itself should save cost on energy?
There is an option we're looking at, and that is when they go out and, they say when they go out and touch the lights for maintenance, when they have to do anything to correct a fixture problem, would be to improve the fixture that's up there. As I mentioned, it's not much of an efficiency issue, it's more about the, we're working with the Dark Skies Group to try to improve the glare and the lights. There's a, most existing heads are what's called a Cobra Head, so it's a light that's got the bulb kind of hanging a bit underneath the light. And there's a more modern approach, which is kind of a flat head, and it doesn't have the glare involved with it. So it's improving the glare effect, but the efficiency isn't much affected. And SC is not willing to go to LED lights, they've found those to be reliable. And so they're almost there, but they're not ready to start installing LED lights.
Okay, well, I'm going to say this again, because I didn't, I didn't get the answer I wanted. And that if two-thirds of our cost goes to maintenance, et cetera, what are we getting for that?
That's primarily the purchase, installation, and maintenance of the light and pole and electrical wiring to get to the pole.
They dust it off every three years.
They dust it off every three years? Okay.
Clean the lenses occasionally, exactly, yeah.
You can take the one in front of my house down. I'll volunteer. It is so bright. It's mid-block, it doesn't need to be there, it's obnoxious, so you can take mine down.
We've got three hundred eighty-four lights to wind down, okay? All right.
That's all right. We're free. We are talking to Edison, we do have their attention, in that the City of Ojai would like some assistance with our lighting.
Absolutely. We just had a meeting with the city manager, myself, and SC a couple of weeks ago, about a week ago, actually.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments of council?
No.
No? Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you.
All right, I'll bring it back to council for any further discussions or a motion.
It's a public hearing. Public.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the public which wishes to address the council on this particular item? No? Then I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. So move. All in favor?
Second? Aye.
All right. Back to the council.
Okay, I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It says here that over several years, I'm sorry, two hundred sixty-four thousand dollars lower. Is that for the fiscal year two thousand thirteen fourteen alone?
No. So over the life of the assessment district, the amount of money spent has exceeded the amount collected almost every year.
Right.
And this negative balance of two hundred and sixty-four has accumulated-
Has accumulated.
-over that period of time.
And how much money do we budget this last year to pave our roads? In the budget, was it three hundred thousand dollars?
We transferred three hundred, about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the capital improvement fund for roads, yes.
And how many roads were we able to pave with that three hundred thousand?
Well, we only paved two this year.
Two. It's amazing, isn't it?
Yeah.
So it takes a lot of money to pave roads, and it's being eroded by this fund. So I think we really do seriously need to look at these options. And I think if we were to look at these options and make these adjustments, i.e. eliminating some light poles, or turning them off from midnight till dawn, I think the biggest problem we would have of implementing something like that would be public pushback. I think there's the perception that light makes you safe. And that if we were to determine that we really need to do this, because this is clearly not a sustainable approach that we're taking, and that if the citizens are not willing to raise the taxes on themselves, which I completely empathize with, we need to take the time to really have some outreach and educate people, to help them understand that this light does not necessarily make them safe. And so I think overall, it's a problem, and we've got to address it, because it does clearly interfere with other things like the recreation department, paving roads, maintaining our public facilities, or even enabling us to add additional things for the public good that we can't, because we're having such an erosion of our general fund from this lighting district. That's all.
Anybody else?
No. But I agree with Councilwoman Clapp's assessment of where we have to go in this direction. We're stuck. We have to either get rid of the poles, that would save money. Just shutting them off does not save much, because two-thirds is for dusting them off every two or three years. And of course, they're very old-fashioned. You know, they're really, new technology and whatever will come about. So I agree, the public needs to be aware. I think, you know, people, again, just like changing from plastic bags to reusable bags took a while, but now we have ninety percent people remember the same thing, as far as carrying a flashlight, or making sure your cellphone, which all of them pretty much have flashlights, and using that for the, if you're thinking it's too dark or something, could be so helpful. So a public education would be very important.
Thank you.
Just one more comment, Mayor Blatt. Also, just important to work with our law enforcement to see if we could identify which light poles, because I know that's always helps with security, so.
Anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Conduct a public hearing to establish assessments for district number one and number three. I'm going to do them all together. Adopt resolution number thirteen.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Ordering the work in levying of the assessments for landscape and lighting district number one and for lighting and landscaping district number three, and direct the city clerk to transmit the necessary documents to the County of Ventura for the levying and collection of property assessments for said districts.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatt?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number three on our agenda, which is another public hearing. This agenda item is the levy and collection of assessments for the Arcade Plaza Maintenance District for fiscal year two thousand thirteen fourteen. Mr. Clark?
Mr. Grant again.
Mr. Grant?
Good evening again, Mayor and council. This is a public hearing for the levying and collection of assessments for the Arcade Plaza Maintenance District for fiscal years two thousand thirteen and fourteen. The district provides funding for utility and maintenance costs associated with the Arcade Plaza. On April ninth, two thousand thirteen, the city council approved the engineer's report and declared its intent to levy and collect the assessments without an increase and set the public hearing for tonight. The two and a half million dollar renovation of the Arcade Plaza, completed in two thousand two, is deteriorating and increasingly in need of higher levels of maintenance and repairs. Maintenance of the Arcade Plaza district over the past six years has resulted in deficits of ten to forty thousand dollars per year, depending on particular maintenance required, which is covered by the general fund. In June of last year, in order to reverse this deficit trend, the district property owners voted approval of a five percent increase in assessments for each of the next five consecutive years beginning this fiscal year. This is reversing that trend. As committed to as part of the rate increase approval, city staff met with the owners and merchants on May seventh, two thousand thirteen, and to discuss the prioritization of improvements in the Plaza Maintenance District. Staff is now working through the improvements and anticipates their completion in the next fiscal year at an estimated cost of forty thousand dollars. And our staff has just started doing this work, you might see out in the plaza now. The Plaza Maintenance Fund has a negative balance of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is expected to increase to two hundred seventy thousand dollars next year as part of these improvements. But ultimately, we do anticipate the increase in assessments will exceed the costs, and we will have, we will resolve the negative fund balance and balance the fund in approximately ten years. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Grant on this agenda item? No? Thank you. Comments at council? This is a public hearing, is there anyone wishing to address us on this item? No? Then I'll move to have some-
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, back to council. Further discussion or a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. I move that we adopt resolution number thirteen twenty-eight.
Yes.
Ordering the work in levying the assessments for the Plaza Maintenance Assessment District without an increase for fiscal year two thousand thirteen fourteen, and direct the city clerk to transmit the necessary documents to the County of Ventura for the levying and collection of property assessments for said district.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Slatt?
Yes. All right, moving on to the next portion of our agenda, our discussion items, this agenda item number four, planning priorities. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Prior to taking up the budget for the fiscal year, I just wanted to confirm one more time what the budget priorities are as it relates to the planning department. We, as you know, we've discussed a number of times that we have quite a number of what I would consider to be major projects on our wish list of things we'd like to do. And I think what we've found over time is that if we try and tackle too many of those at once, our efforts get diluted and it's hard to get everything done. So I'm thinking that the best approach to moving through these major projects is to take on two or three that are the highest priority first, and then when those start to wind down, to move on to others and spend our time and efforts on those. And I think that way we'll get through our priorities in a more efficient way. But it's important, of course, that the priorities that we work on are the priorities that the city council sets. And so I do think, based on the input that we've had so far this year, that the highest three priorities for the next six months or so for the Community Development Department are developing the draft cycle five housing element update, implementing the second unit amnesty plan, which was part of the fourth cycle, and then bringing forth for consideration the new building height limit, which we'll be discussing a little bit more this evening. And in saying that, I do note later on in the report that there's other things that we will be working on a little bit simultaneously, but our major effort would be on those. The other thing I wanted to discuss in a little bit more depth is the issue of constraints. And this has come up in conjunction with the discussion of the housing element. We thought quite a bit about traffic, air quality, and water constraints, and what's the best way to tackle that and approach that. Both transportation and air quality are very important considerations in the RAINA development process, and this is something that is, that SCAG takes the lead on, but that the city has an opportunity to comment and provide input on. And the, they have something called the RTP SCP, which is the Regional Transportation Plan, Sustainable Community Plan, that's developed on a four-year cycle, and is developed before the RAINA process begins. So that document, or that study, which is a foundational document for the housing element and for a lot of the SCAG planning items, is in process right now. And there's, and they will be developing their traffic information and their air quality information during the first half of two thousand fourteen. So I'm thinking that our best approach to addressing traffic constraints and air quality constraints is to see what SCAG comes up with, what they develop, and then to weigh in on it. And I think that this kind of process is where we've missed the boat in the past. If you don't challenge what SCAG comes up with, you live with it. And the biggest factor, of course, is their growth projection, and their growth projection, I believe, was radically wrong for this last cycle. The traffic counts and the air quality calculations are a little bit more straightforward scientifically. So I'm not saying that we should accept them, I'm saying we should wait for them and then make a determination as to whether we need to gather alternative data, or challenge them in some other way, or if they support our case, accept them. So that's the suggested approach for traffic and air quality. With water limitations, during the earlier public hearings on cycle four, we identified our true need as far as documentation of water availability goes, and that's to come up with a detailed hydrological model that predicts the impact of water use, water pumping, and wells, so that we know how much our water table can handle. That's a task that's probably best led by the Ojai Basin, and also participated in by the various water agencies that are on the basin authority. One of the problems that we have is that, I think I can, I can say with a great deal of confidence that Golden State Water and Casitas Water District have a very different thought process and approach to preservation of the water table. Golden State has taken the attitude that they're entitled to as much water as they want, and they, whenever there's a need for water, say for affordable housing or for any other purpose, they will allocate it. In my conversations with the Casitas- for any other purpose, they will allocate it. In my conversations with the Casitas Water District, they're much more concerned about the health of the water table, the health of the lake itself as our reservoir, and our true ability to provide water to new development. So, I think that we would be better off waiting for the election, to see how that comes out, and waiting to see if Casitas moves into the ownership position with our primary water service before we push to undertake this study, because the water purveyor is going to have a huge impact on the outcome of that study. So, probably enough said on that. So, that's pretty much my introduction. I'd be glad to respond to any questions, but more than anything else, we want to make sure we're just on the right track with the priorities.
Comments by council?
And I don't want to get into depth on this, but when they talk about the traffic studies, they always talk about peak hours. And one thing I've noticed over the last five years is, I'm assuming peak hours are commuter hours during the week, that, do they ever include weekends on these, in these studies? Because one of the areas where I've seen one of the biggest increases in impact in traffic, not just in during a certain block of hours in the morning and the afternoon, is all day long, is over the weekend. And is that something that's considered in traffic studies when they set RENA numbers?
I think that's a good comment, and I think we should take it into consideration. The information that I provided in the report comes from the Caltrans website, and they don't actually tell you how they decide what the peak hour is. So, I'm not sure whether weekends are included there or not. But that's something that we can definitely watch for when SCAG starts coming out with their information.
And then just a little aside is, I sit on the OBGMA board, and I was told at the last meeting, that Lake Casitas, they expect to be at sixty percent by November. And if we have another dry summer, dry winter, that it could go to fifty percent. And when it goes to fifty percent, then they start not giving well-served letters, and things of that sort. So, it is a critical situation that SCAG doesn't seem to understand.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I will make a comment. The idea of accepting SCAG's analysis, how do I say this nicely? I would question how much attention SCAG has given the city of Ojai, because for their region, we represent, what, one percent?
That much.
And so, it may be less than that. But what I'm saying is, are we so small that we're just getting an estimate? That are we such a small percentage that there have been no actual statistics taken in our area? There's just an assumption? So, what I'm saying is, I'm cautious about accepting SCAG's evaluations on traffic and the air pollution of Ojai.
And I would just like to clarify, I'm not in any way, shape, or form saying that we should accept SCAG's models or predictions. What I'm saying is that we should wait for them to come out, and then if they don't, if we don't agree with them, challenge them. And where we've missed the boat in the past is that SCAG has come out with very inaccurate population projections, specifically for Ojai, and we didn't challenge them on a timely basis, and we got stuck with SCAG's numbers. The main point is, we don't want to get stuck with SCAG's numbers if we don't agree with them.
Mayor Blatts, just a comment on what Mayor Protem, Strobel, Mr. Strobel had to say is, going through conferences, I've gone through SCAG's main conference they had over there in Palm Springs, I think it was. And it is, you do question their respect, or their, what they've done for Ojai, you definitely do, because they deal with big cities. But one thing that I've learned, and have been well received, is that if we want to participate, I think it is important for us to give our two cents. Now, where would that take us? I, no idea. But I think that it is important just to keep, because they do have committees when they're talking about RENA numbers, and if we could jump on it and see, at least give our two cents, I think it would be smart for us to be proactive. Also, to have behind our minds how we could do our own studies, and if we have questions, be more upfront with them, and etc. But yeah, it is, it's all politics. I mean, it's, it's just a very messy, messy process, so.
Mr. Mayor, one more comment. That wasn't true. I think if they, if SCAG and Carl Morehouse started hearing from the city more often, to the point where they go, oh, no, not another letter from Ojai, that would bring us at least up on the conscious level where they realize that we're not going to just accept. So, I don't know how we would do that, but we need to start making sure our voice is heard and often.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think there's a tendency for them to use this as dumping ground, because they think we're too small. David and Goliath, so. So, David and Goliath kind of situation. So, I agree. I think we need to be as proactive as possible, and I know that that's not an easy task, but I think it's important.
Any other comments? I think that the outline that you've described with the top three is correct. I'm in agreement with the proposed priorities that you've shown within the staff report, Mr. Clark. Any other comments by council on the proposed priorities?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just comment that I am also in agreement on the proposed priorities. I don't know that you need any kind of motion, I think you're just confirming.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm fine with it.
Okay, is that all?
Great.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Clark. Moving on to item number five on our discussion item.
Thank you, mayor and members of the city council. This is the time and place to adopt our budget for next fiscal year, and set our fee schedule, and our salary schedule for the next fiscal year. We've had quite a number of sessions where we've received input from the community, and from our commissions, and from others on the budget. And as a result of that, there are a number of changes to the budget, which we have listed on page five dash two. But just to be clear on a couple items, we are including the recommended budget additions made by the Arts Commission, as well as the Historic Preservation Commission. We also are including thirty thousand to address neighborhood district planning, which was recommended by the Planning Commission. And there were no changes to the Parks and Recreation Budget, but that budget was endorsed by the Recreation Commission. So, I think we've responded to all of those things. Also, as we were directed at the last meeting, we've included fifty thousand dollars for the museum for their operating subsidy this year, as well as the money that they need to address the termite problems and leakage problems in their building. So, I'd be glad to answer any specific questions about the budget. The fee schedule, we also went over in a public hearing at the last meeting, and we reviewed some of the changes to the fee schedule. I just wanted to point out that we did get a couple communications about a potential lower of the fee for banners that are up on a repetitive basis, such as for organizations that are putting on a number of plays or performances during the course of the year. And that is not in the fee schedule yet, but could be put in the fee schedule by the council if that's your desire. And then finally, we discussed the employee compensation issues in closed session. And what we're proposing is a three percent increase for the employees that are in classified positions, and a three percent increase in the ranges for management employees. However, their increases are not guaranteed, they're awarded or not awarded based on merit. We've also included the potential for an increase of eleven percent when someone goes from thirty-six hours per week to forty hours per week, which is an eleven percent increase in the number of hours. And I think we have, there's a couple classification changes that are included in the management realm. One is that we've deleted the Parks and Recreation Director position, and added a Deputy City Manager position at the same range. And we've deleted the Assistant to the City Manager position, and added a Recreation Manager position at the same range. So, overall, you have the same number of manager positions at the same ranges, but a little bit different mix, based on our current needs. So, at this point, we would like you to complete any further review you have of the budget, fee schedule, or salary considerations, and then adoption of those documents. By resolution.
Any comments or questions of Mr. Clark?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Councilmember Smith?
The expense for, on page five dash seven, for planning for neighborhood district planning for a consultant, I'd like to, I am in support of doing that, absolutely, but I'm not sure what the scope of work would be, and where it would be leading. I think it's to sort of go to zoning that would fit the neighborhood, and our, like, for the village, you know, where our downtown is, and the type of houses. Am I correct with that? Right, right. Okay. So, I would like to, before the request for proposals goes out, or all, you know, will that come to council as far as what's the scope of work would be?
Yeah, we'll bring it both to city council and Planning Commission for input before we circulate it.
Excellent. I have some good names for neighborhoods, too.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, one question. On the amount included for a consultant for the neighborhood projects, is that necessary? That's not something we can do in-house?
Well, Mr. Mullein may be able to address that a little bit more, but I think that there's a lot of things on our plate that we'd like to do, and we can't do all of them with our existing staff. So, I don't think we can get into neighborhood district planning this year if we have our staff fully engaged in these other things. There may also be special skills that can come with the consulting that we wouldn't have on staff. Anything you'd like to add?
Are there any special skills that you think the person hired would bring to the table that would make it more efficient?
Yes. Councilmember Smith, the, I think a huge component of the neighborhood planning is community outreach. And so, to have somebody that's skillful in facilitation, and running a meeting, gathering input from a variety, from a segment of the population that maybe isn't used to coming to city council meetings, or Planning Commission meetings, will be very important.
Any other comments? I just have one with regard to the fee schedule. I would like us to include a revised fee for those repetitive banners. And in reviewing the Planning Commission's comments, it appeared that twenty-five dollars was discussed, and I think that's appropriate. So, I'd like to see that included in the fee schedule.
So, I think when you make the motion, just make sure that that's included in the motion.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? This is a discussion item, it's not a public hearing, but if anybody has any, yes, come forward, please.
My name's Brian Hakens, I'm at one twenty-five Rio via Oak View, and I would just like to thank each of you that have been involved with our attempt to inform and involve the city council in the request for funding for the museum. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, you're welcome. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, regarding the reduced fees for banner, I read both of those emails, and I know what you're alluding to, but if we include that in the motion approving the budget, are we clear? Because we would only be giving this special rate to two entities, is that correct?
No, I believe it would be any entity that was going to.
Yeah, and it would go to any entity that fits the qualifications for those repetitive banners. And also, I would like to point out, that should be an amendment to the fee resolution, not the budget resolution.
Okay.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
Is there a size limit on that?
I defer to Mr. Mullein about the size limit.
What is the size limit?
I could look up in the zoning code right now and get back to you on that.
It's the same as what it is now.
We're not changing that.
About the same, what's in front of the Arts Center, right?
So, let me answer it another way. The revised ordinance was approved by the Planning Commission, is going to come to you next, so you can actually address that when it comes to you.
When will it be coming before us?
Is it July seventh?
July ninth. We just got the public notice out to the Ojai Valley News.
So, what would be the fee between now and the time that the ordinance is approved, and read sufficient enough times, and things like that?
We'll charge the twenty-five dollar fee if that's what's approved tonight.
Alright, any other discussion? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to adopt Number Thirteen Dash.
Twenty-nine.
Adopting the final revised fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget, and the proposed fiscal two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget. And then also, are we doing separate motion, or including them all, the same?
Districts separate them all.
Yeah, clear. Adopt Resolution Number Thirteen Dash.
Thirty.
Adopting the fee schedule for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, including the new banner fee. And then adopting Resolution Number Thirteen Dash.
Thirty-one.
Setting salaries and terms and conditions for employment, and amending the employee handbook.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes. Alright, thank you. Moving on to item number six is Libby Bowl Management Agreement. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, mayor and members of the city council. First of all, before I get started, I'd like to say it's been my pleasure over the past couple years to get to know the people who are the members of the Board of Directors of the Libby Bowl Foundation, and also their bowl manager, Beth Sutherland. And I've been to some of their fundraising events, and some of the events that they put on in the Libby Bowl, and I've got to say that they're a very dedicated group, and a very talented group. And over the course of these past couple years, they've not only volunteered their time to being on the Board of Directors, but they volunteered their time, and their talent, and their money to making the bowl work. So, it's been a pleasure to get to know them. In conjunction with the construction of Libby Bowl, there were a series of policy decisions that were made early on. And one of the concerns that drove these policy decisions was that the city, as the manager of the bowl, prior to its being rebuilt, was not collecting enough money to cover the cost of operating the bowl, and was not collecting any money at all to maintain the bowl. And that's part of the reason that it deteriorated. And so, there was a very big concern early on about creating the conditions that would potentially alleviate that problem. And so, a couple, a number of decisions were made. One was to allow commercial events, which hadn't been allowed prior. Another was to allow sale of alcoholic beverages, which had not been allowed prior. And the third was to have a nonprofit community organization be the manager of the bowl. And so, in response to that, a, two separate one-year interim agreements have been entered into between the city council and the Libby Bowl Foundation for management. They managed the two thousand twelve season, and they're currently managing the two thousand thirteen season. When the second one-year was approved, the council also included its intent, and the foundation included their intent, to work together on a long-range management agreement. Subsequent to that, in order to get that process going, the city council appointed Mayor Blatts and Councilmember Smith to be a negotiating team to work with the Board of Directors of the foundation on this long-term management agreement. And so, that's what's before you for your consideration tonight. The agreement is similar in many respects to the one-year agreements that we've had, in terms of their scope of responsibility and so forth. However, it does have a long However, it does have a longer term. It's a five-year rolling term, which means that initially it's five years, and then after a year, if everything is going well, it's extended, so it's still five years. It also has a change in the facility fee that we charge. Initially, we charged a $2 per ticket facility fee for commercial events only. And I think we learned in that first year that there's very few events that actually are classified as commercial, although there's a lot of big events that have an impact on the bowl. And so this year, in the second one-year agreement, we moved that from $2 for commercial events and $1 for nonprofit events that have a ticket price over $15. And it was our judgment that's still not sufficient to collect the amount of money that we need for ongoing maintenance. And when I say ongoing maintenance, what I'm referring to is periodically replacing the seats, periodically redoing the roof, periodically painting it, that kind of thing, the kinds of things that maybe in a condo association would be part of a sinking fund. However, this agreement includes $2 for both commercial events and nonprofit events that have a ticket price over $15. And just as a point of reference, if that schedule had been applied in the 2012 season, we would have actually collected the $20,000 that is our target amount for the facility fund. So as I said, it has a five-year rolling term. It has financial reporting and auditing requirements. It has an annual review by the City Council. The foundation is required to provide a bowl manager. The utility costs that are attributable to the events in the bowl, which are estimated to be about $4,000, are waived during the first five-year term, but after that, after the first five years, would be picked up by the foundation. The city seal is to appear on the foundation website and all of the promotional materials. The insurance requirements are those that are approved by the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, which is the authority that we're responsible to and are the same as the short-term agreement. So the other thing that I wanted to bring up are the environmental considerations. We did look at the operation of Libby Bowl and determined that there's a categorical exemption, which is a Class 23 categorical exemption, which relates to normal operations of existing facilities for public gatherings, to which this applies. So the recommendation tonight is to accept the determination that additional environmental study is not required and that a Class 23 categorical exemption does apply, and to approve the management agreement that's proposed. And so it may, I don't know if the council members who are on the committee have any comments, but really, it's not just a staff recommendation, it's also a recommendation of the council committee.
Any questions?
Clarification. Did you say that for the term of this, it would be a $1 for nonprofit charge and $2 for profit?
No, it'll be $2 for both.
Okay. I thought you...
And that's starting, this agreement actually goes into effect for the 2014 season, so it'll be a little bit different in 2013.
Okay.
Any questions?
Just have a comment. The process of going through this was very interesting, and I think on both sides, a lot of learning took place, both on the city's part, and I represented the city along with mayor, and on the foundation's bowl. Again, you know, contracts are binding, unless people want out of them. Contracts are binding, and they should be, because it protects both parties. But in this particular contract, you know, I feel both parties have, basically have the same interest, which is wanting to succeed with the bowl. And so I felt that wasn't as though we were dealing with unknowns or people who had different interests than the city does. So in that sense, I had a very good feeling for what has gone on before and on the fact that our bowl is a treasure to our city. And so that my feeling was that it will be very well managed and has a bright future in this agreement.
And I, Mayor, Councilwoman Smith's comments. The contract was looked at in quite detailed, and we met with several people that are on the board of the foundation. I felt that the communication that the city had had prior to this go-around and the communication with the foundation probably hadn't been as good as it should have been. There were some misconceptions by the foundation, and there were misconceptions by the city with regard to areas of responsibility and how the bowl was to be managed. I thought we came away with a much higher level of understanding between the city and the foundation, and I felt that we were both very optimistic about the future of the bowl. And I can tell you that the management agreement went through several attritions of changing language and adding some things and taking some things out, all which I feel benefit the bowl and benefit the city. So I'm very comfortable with coming to the council with a recommendation that we approve it. Anyone else with any comments?
This is a public area?
No, it's a discussion item, but I'm going to ask if there's any. Anyone in the public wishing to address the council? No? Okay. Oh, sure, come forward.
Hi, Randy.
How are you?
Wonderful. I'm going to speak as a citizen. Randy Haney, 513 Pleasant Avenue, I believe that's the, how it's done. You know, I have a couple, first, a couple of concerns. But first, I'd like to thank the Libby Bowl Foundation for all the work that they have done in the past. And I don't want to come off as some negative person or negative energy or any of this or something like that, but the foundation has been in existence for two years, year and a half, 2012 and this year. And my first question would be, what have they done for us? I just, I don't have a sense that they've done anything that's made the community better, that's made the bowl better. I just don't have that sense. So heading into a contract, I think having a five-year contract is probably a good thing. It might give them some sense of ownership, but the reality, they've owned it for a year and a half, and I just, you know, if I was, if I had owned something for a year and a half, I'd want to see some results from it. And then looking into some of the contract, I don't have, there's no performance clause, there's no six-month, you have to be able to do this, or in nine months, you have to be able to do this, or in one year, when we do our review, we'd like to see this, 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 and this done. I mean, I sign contracts all the time to provide services and to perform work, and I mean, they're A, B, C, D, and you've got to meet them or you don't get paid. Now, there's no exchange of money here, per se, but there is an exchange of service here. We're lending them this bowl to generate money for the city and also to generate money for their foundation. So I just don't see that anywhere in the writing. I don't see any goals set. I don't see any performance clauses set. I don't, if those are the right words, I could be wrong on that. So I personally would have liked to see that maybe in the contract, and I don't necessarily know how to achieve that, but I'm just saying, as a citizen, I think that's what I would have liked to have seen. I think Beth has done a wonderful job for the year and a half, but I think maybe her hands have been tied, or maybe she tied her hands herself. I'm not sure on that. But the time that she's come and spoke to the Recreation and Parks Commission, I didn't really have a great sense that she was, you know, running full-tilt forward, or as we'd call in football, full-tilt boogie. It was kind of like, well, we're waiting for this agreement, or we're waiting for something else to happen. So that's just my concern. They've had an opportunity, they've done some good things, I don't know if they've done some great things. And we're entering into a contract that's five years, if not, it could be greater, it could be longer. And I just, my concern is just that we don't have any, like I said, a performance standard for them or some goals that they need to achieve. I just haven't seen that in what I've read. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. I think those comments are well-taken. Keep in mind, it's not a five-year contract. It's a rolling, it's a rolling five-year contract that is evaluated annually. And it just kind of, after the first year, it's evaluated, and then it's, it goes out five more years, and then after the next year, it's evaluated and goes out five more years. It's a five-year contract that's really looked at on an annual basis. And part of what we look at on an annual basis is performance. The bowl was a startup operation, and there was a bit of a learning curve as to exactly how the bowl was going to be managed and what was available to the bowl. In talking with the foundation, Councilwoman Smith and I heard a lot of information that they had imparted to us with regard to the efforts that they've made and some of the things that they're looking forward to doing in the future. I was convinced that they had done a good job, and I'm convinced that they're going to do a good job in the future. But Mr. Clark, do you have anything to add to Mr. Haney's concern that they haven't seen anything or they don't understand what the foundation has done in the time period that they have?
One of the things I looked at is sort of the history of the number of events that have occurred at the bowl. They're in the six-month period from May to October, which is really the season. If you take out the festival weekends and the tennis tournament weekend, there's 23 weekends. And going back to 2005, we had 18 events, and then that tapered off until 2009, we only had nine events in the Libby Bowl. So things were dropping off quite a bit. Last year, in their first year of operation, which was sort of a last-minute startup thing, as you mentioned, they had 22 events. So I think that bodes very well for us, especially in terms of the facility fee. You know, if you think, it's true that we want to see interesting and diverse programming, but we definitely want to see some people show up and pay the facility fee so it can maintain the thing. And they did generate enough attendance to generate the amount that we want if we had applied the current fee schedule. So that's one comment. Another comment is, they're required in the agreement to basically submit their own business plan that indicates what their goals and objectives are for the year and what their projections are for the year. And then they're required to have an annual review by the City Council, as you also mentioned, at which we can measure their performance as it relates to those goals and objectives. So I don't think we were really, as city folk, in a position to be able to dictate goals and objectives, so more, so much as just to review those that they set in their own business plan and then to evaluate those when the year is finished up.
Thank you. And I think I can speak for Councilwoman Smith. After meeting with the individuals of the foundation, I am confident that these people have the best interest of the Libby Bowl at heart, and they certainly have the talent to be able to do it. So I look forward to moving forward with them. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? No? All right, thank you, Mary. Thank you, Randy. Back to the council.
I would like to comment, Mayor Blatz, and that is, the subcommittee of the two council members, Mayor Blatz and Councilmember Smith, I was really glad to see that group working with the foundation, because as far as I'm concerned, that's the strongest, the first, the most beneficial dialogue between the city or the stakeholders of the Libby Bowl. And that is very important to me. So what I would encourage is that we continue communication, because unless we talk and determine what is working for the foundation, what is working for the city, what's the state of the bowl, unless we're talking, I don't think we can get as an efficient, higher use, highest use of the bowl. So I'd like to see us continue what we've been doing.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
To the substance of the agreement and also the staff report, I have a few questions. On page 6 dash 3 at the top, Libby Bowl Production Fund, I'd like some clarification on this, one part of that. The size of the facility and the marketable ticket price only allow for a small margin of profit. In order to make the bowl more attractive to a commercial promoter, the foundation believes that it needs to establish a fund to cover losses in the event of poor ticket sales. To that end, they have established raising such a fund, the verbiage is a little odd here, as one of their key goals. So my question is, are they saying that if they book an act, a commercial act, and the act doesn't sell enough tickets, that they're going to make up the difference?
Yes.
Whoa, I would never do that.
So here's what the problem is. There's, based on the input that we received from the foundation, given all the fixed costs, you know, you've got to rent the lights, you've got to rent the sound, you've got to pay for the artist, you've got to cover the security, there's a lot of fixed expenses that all have to be committed upfront. And there's also a limit on how much you can charge to get strong attendance in terms of ticket price. So the potential profit, even if you have a sellout or practically a sellout, isn't all that great. But the potential loss, if you have bad sales, is substantial. And so the issue that they've run into with potential promoters is who's going to cover that loss? And they've felt that one way that they can make the bowl more successful is to raise a fund that can be used to back these performances and sort of guarantee a certain amount of revenue to the promoter.
I find that interesting. It's really interesting.
I did, too, yeah.
Sounds like a bad business decision to me, that there's not enough seats and they can't charge enough tickets, charge enough for the tickets, so the chance of making money for commercial venture is nil, essentially nil. So the only way they can get a commercial venture to come in is to pay them money if they end up being a loser. And how much money are they going to have to generate a year in order to do that? Boy, that sounds really like a bad business deal all the way around.
Let me explain a little bit about that.
Yeah, that's...
The way that, the way that many performers operate, producers and promoters, is that they will come to a venue, but they want to be guaranteed a certain amount of money for their performance. Most of the time, and it's in any venue, the venue does not have a particular problem with that, because they have a history of types of acts and what the sale of seats has been and the history of performances and how much they make. If we, if the Libby Bowl, and with the prices where the foundation would set them, has a sellout, for instance, they're going to make money. If sufficient seats are sold, they're going to make money. The foundation isn't in the, is not in the management of trying to make an exorbitant amount of money for themselves, although they're hoping that there'll be excess funds. But they're afraid that there could be a time when a performance could come in where the tickets simply didn't sell, but in order to get an artist there, they had to guarantee something. So they believe that if they have a fund available, that they can then guarantee, not expecting to lose money, but having that fund there in the event they did, because these artists want a guarantee. And the guarantee would have to be done with a reasonable ticket price, but without that guarantee, they're not going to come here. And that's the way that the promoters are working. Now, whether that's a smart idea or not, I will tell you that most venues, and venues larger than Libby Bowl, that's the way they work. The promoter has guaranteed something, then they put on the show, and the vast majority of the time, if not all the time, the revenues exceed the expenses, and they never have to worry about that fund.
Was there any discussion that they would ever come to the city to help cover that loss?
There was no discussion by the foundation that they would ever come to the city to cover that loss, because they wanted to go out and generate their own funds to have their own fund that would be available. Never did they once say that they thought that the performances should be underwritten by the city.
Yeah, I was very surprised. I mean, I don't know much about promoting, you know, events, but I was surprised to hear that, but when I, we thought about it more, it made sense. So even big venues like the Santa Barbara Bowl and stuff, they have a similar... But when I, we thought about it more, it made sense. So even big venues like the Santa Barbara Bowl and stuff, they have a similar structure where the promoter, in order to, to
Book the act.
Basically has to guarantee a certain amount to cover expenses or the act's, or the, or the performer won't accept.
And if, if properly promoted and properly managed, then the, then the show would not ever have to worry about that. But in order to be able to do it, they have to have the fund there as kind of a fund available there just in case. That's what that's referring to.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just want to be sure that my understanding is correct. From reading the staff report and the contract, it appears to me that the foundation is saying one of their objectives is to create a, a production fund. It's not an obligation of the city.
That's correct.
A couple more questions. On page six dash six, under Bowl Defined, number two, second paragraph. When requested by the foundation, in order to prevent conflicts with events at the Libby Bowl, the city agrees to close the upper Libby tennis courts and bleachers. Was, was there any discussion at all with the Recreation, Park and Recreation Commission on that? About what the, that the foundation would have the authority to, to, to close the tennis courts?
We, we didn't have any discussion with the Parks and Recreation Commission, however, this is a, a holdover clause from their current agreement. The current agreement actually defines the upper tennis courts as being part of the premises. And the reason for it is, is that sometimes you, it's a conflict to have tennis and, and a performance going on at the same time for both tennis and the performance. So we've administratively coordinated this and it's not been a problem over the past two years.
Would, would it be okay if I asked Mr. Haney to step to the podium?
You'd have to ask the mayor.
Mr. Mayor? May I call Mr. Haney forward?
If Mr. Haney can speak for the entire Park and Recreation's
I don't think he can.
We did discuss this, Mayor Blatz, we did, yeah. And, and we felt that through the city manager's office and the foundation that it wasn't they were just going to shut the tennis courts down, they were going to do it in conjunction with events.
Good, so it was, it was brought before you, okay. Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you, Randy.
Another question. I'm sorry. Oh, under seven, page six dash seven, number seven, Financial Relationship. It says that during the term of the agreement that the foundation shall, shall have the right to set all fees and charges. And that includes ticket surcharges. Is that over and above the, the, the surcharge that we have, the $2 surcharge?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Well, I want to make a comment there.
Okay.
We did receive a letter from Lenny Clafe who asked specifically under that clause if that meant that the foundation could increase the fees set for the local organizations that traditionally use the Bowl for annual events and it might cause them to set up, the foundation might set a price beyond the reach of the local organizations. Could you comment on that, Mr. Clark?
Sure. The, the foundation has actually been setting the fee for local organizations for the past two years. And as I indicated, the number of events has increased pretty dramatically from what we have before, so I don't think that's the case right now. Of course, this is something that could be discussed during the annual reviews if, if we feel that the prices that they set are exorbitant and they're excluding local groups. I, I think that'd be a good thing to discuss when we have those reviews.
But we still have those protected programs.
We have, yeah, we have legacy events. The legacy events pay the fee that's set for community events. We also have the ability to have three city-sponsored events, so we have the option of, of sponsoring an event too, which we would, it's just a pass on the part of the foundation.
Thank you.
Moving on. Okay, six dash eight, D, Financial Records and Audit. An audit is not, it's number, letter B, an audit is not performed more frequently than once during the term. So there's only an audit within the five years. And the term is a rolling term, so how do you deal with audits?
So we, we could request an audit every year, I believe, under these, under this language. That was the intent.
These are successive terms of one year based on a five-year contract.
Well, if, I don't, I don't think, I doubt
The term's five years.
Yeah, if, if you think the language needs to be clarified, we could certainly do that.
I think that needs to be clarified. I think we should have the ability to audit it once a year if necessary. Not that we would necessarily take it, do that, but I think that that provision should be available to us. I don't think that's unreasonable. And if you go on to six dash nine, it's a little perplexing to me as well. It's this, this fourth sentence. In the event the city receives a request to review records of the foundation in the city's possession, it shall consult with the foundation before responding. I don't understand.
Maybe I could answer, answer that question. This comes up in, in situations where you have a public-private situation, the Public Records Act. On the Public Records Act, all records of the city are available, are public. Sometimes you have situations where you have a private entity, in this case, the main issue they have is, is the question of the, of confidential fundraiser, of constant donors, people who want to be anonymous and not have to disclose their donation. So what, I've done this in other agreements too, where ultimately we have the responsibility to determine whether the rec, whether we can withhold the record or, or make it public. And it's one of the reasons we put language in here that, that we acknowledge between ourselves, that there may be certain situations, particularly anonymous donors, that we think, and I use the magic language from the Public Records Act, that the private, privacy interest clearly outweighs the public interest in knowing. We, if we get a public record, record request for that, what we, what this provides for is we have to make a determination that's disclosable or not. If we determine that is, that should be disclosed, we have to notify the foundation first. They have a choice to step in and challenge that release of those records for, for their privacy reasons. And if they want to do that, they have to pay any costs of, of, of a legal challenge to the release of those records. Gives them, it, it makes sure that we satisfy the public records requirements. At the same time, it gives them the position, if they want to choose to expend the money for legal costs, to, 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 to challenge the release of those records, it's no economic cost to the city.
Hang on, I apologize. It's a lot here. Page six dash 10, bottom of the page, Minor Improvements. It says, "Any exterior construction or interior alteration project in, on, or about the premises which is less than $25,000 in aggregate and/or requires a permit from the city shall be presented to the city in written form with proposed plans." I'm sorry. Did I misread? I'm I'm sorry. I misunderstood that when I read it, so please pardon me on that, ignore it. I thought there was somewhere in here where they could do, they could do alterations if they were under $25,000 without whether they, they would be allowed to do that. Do you understand what I'm saying?
With our consent.
Yeah, with, yeah, I'm sorry. I misread that. Okay, I think I'm done. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Lara, do you have questions?
No, there are more comments, I guess, reading this agreement about, first of all, I, I think that the Libby, the foundation is really taking on a I guess, a contract that is very challenging. I, I commend them for that, considering that the Libby Bowl was never a place where we allowed commercial venues. And to stab and take a stab at that here in Ojai while respecting nonprofits to have the ability to continue their events is very challenging, especially with the small venue. So I, I do, I, in a way, I am concerned that there isn't a goal setting, because I, I, that was one of the, the things that alerted me, that there's really no rapport on or business plan on how they're going to be successful. But at the same time, how successful they could be here in Ojai, we don't know. That's just, we've never done it. And considering the fact that this last year and a half, they've really, the lack of money that they've produced and they're having put us, they haven't asked for any type of money really tells me that they're committed to making this Bowl successful. So, I mean, with that said, I, I just commend them for doing that and I, I just want to tread carefully, it's just not forgetting what the Libby Bowl was meant for. And that's basically, and I'll be interested to see what they come up in a year and to see if all the identified bullet points that they listed on six dash two are resolved in five years. Or we could build a, a relationship with the foundation to resolve those because there, there are serious identifications to like the sound and lighting, the amenities, and, and I think it would be important to work with them, so.
Thank you. I have a speaker's card, Dimitri Corbin. Hi, Dimitri.
Hi, council everyone. I, I first have to say, I am so grateful to be here right now because today I was to, I was scheduled for surgery. And on Friday I had to, to take a pause and postpone it. Otherwise I would have not have been here today. And I actually thought today that would be the day that Kim Maxwell would, would be getting her lifetime achievement award. I don't know why that didn't, that's not the case. And I missed it.
Who is the star of the meeting?
I, well, first of all, I want to say congratulations to Kim Maxwell and to the Arts Commission and to the city of Ojai for presenting her with that award because she is truly an Ojai treasure and has influenced our community in a great deal. So I'm happy to be able to, to say that. And then to speak on the Libby Bowl, and I'll be brief because you all know how I feel about things. I've stated them very clearly. The one thing I would like to add to what I think is not been involved in the whole management of the Bowl and what, which I am passionate about, is to ensure that the Bowl is maintained not just for nonprofit organizations, but for a venue for education. And I'm going to speak on an example of that. Reading everything, I know that there are two people in the community who are going to receive the first Arts Ojai mentorship program. And that's Charlotte Ko and Chance Lang. And I just want to say, for me, I feel honored that they're doing that because those are two students that I first taught. And I taught them in the Libby Bowl. Charlie Ko was seven years old and I believe Chance Lang was 12. And if you know these students, they are very, very successful in the community and their relation to the arts and how it has helped their education. And that is what I do. And I have taught thousands of children in this community and throughout the county. And one of the things that I've been able to do that is with having access to a venue to teach kids not how to act, but how to use a theater, how to present themselves. And I've been able to do that through the Recreation Department with access to the Libby Bowl. Whether there are five students or whether there are 20, it helps them in their progress in the community and in their lives, having access to quality education and facilities. So far in all of these talks about the Libby Bowl management, I haven't gotten a clear line that says, yes, you will have access to that stage to teach the children in this community. And I would like to have that. And I would like to see that in these discussions. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dimitri.
Mayor, Mayor Blatz could ask Mr. Corbin the question?
Dimitri?
I have a question for you. Yeah, well, so that the public could hear you. Sorry. It will just be a short, it'll be a short question. When you're talking about educational programs, are you talking through the, in the management or through the Parks and Recs or through the city?
In Recs, because you know that I have the contract with the city through the Recreation Department to teach theater, which gives me access to all the, the public facilities. And one of those is the Libby Bowl. And I have to say, since the Libby Bowl has been renovated, I have not been able to teach there.
And this is the weekends or weekdays?
Summertime, I teach three to four weeks. And every year, every year I have been able to teach my program and have a performance on Ojai Day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corbin. Anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council? I see there's some members of the foundation. Any of you want to say anything? No? Okay. I'm glad you're here. Mayor Protem Strobel?
Regarding the closing or conflict of the upper tennis courts with any events going on in Libby Bowl, I would like, I've, I've been at, I've attended the Parks and Rec Commission meetings when Beth has given an update or a report on how the foundation is doing as a, overall. But I would request that the specific issue of any conflicts between the upper tennis courts and performances at the Bowl, a report on that be brought to the Parks and Rec Department. How often does it happen? How have we resolved it? More a specific issue. And another thing I would like is there are problems during the year that come to the individual council member's attention. And they're usually passed on to the, the city manager. I'd like a dialogue between the, the city and the foundation when issues come up. What are the issues? How have we resolved them? An update rather than silence. So I guess I'm promoting more dialogue between the city and the foundation so that we can have a better program.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Strobel. Any other comments of the council? All right. I will entertain a motion.
I will be happy to make a motion to accept the determination that additional environmental study is not required and that a Class 23 categorical exemption under section 15323 of the State Guidelines for the California Environmental Quality Act is adequate for the environmental review of the management agreement and, and approve the attached management agreement with the Libby Bowl Foundation.
Second?
Further discussion?
Yeah, real quick question. Is it, I'm confused about Dimitri's question about access to the Bowl for his classes through the Recreation Department. Is that, could I have further clarification about that? Is he, has he, does he not have access?
I, I'm not sure I can answer that. Steve or Beth, can you answer?
Well, this is probably not the best statement that I could make right now, but with all due respect to Mr. Corbin, I don't know that the Rec Department has ever denied him any access to use the Bowl. If there's been issues with terms of scheduling or timeliness with the request, those certainly are issues, but we have no standing policy. In fact, I would say, listening to the dialogue, discussions about the tennis courts, staff tries to work very carefully with the staff of the foundation to try to resolve these issues as they come up. I do understand what Mayor Protem Strobel is saying and I think oftentimes the council is not aware of some of the discussions that are going on. And I agree that that could always be worked on, could always be improved. We, we do have in the agreement the provision to, as Mr. Clark stated out, to request specific dates to use the Bowl. One of the reasons why staff asked for that provision was so that specifically we could have control and access of the Bowl during Ojai Day. have control and access of the bowl during Ojai Day. So we are certainly amenable to sitting down with Mr. Corbin or any member of the community who wants to coordinate something for Ojai Day or something through the Recreation Department. And I believe that Ms. Sutherland and the foundation would be, can't speak for them, would be more than willing to address the city if we have such a request.
Thank you. Councilman Lara? No? Mayor Protem Strobel?
We, we've gotten sidetracked, but if Mr. McClary would come back to the podium, I have a, a question. And it, it deals with Mr. Corbin's comments also. We have a, a stage at the Rec Department, correct?
That is correct.
And there are stages at every school, correct?
As far as I know.
So why would Mr. Corbin be limited to using the stage at the bowl? The reason I'm mentioning this is not that, I don't know that it's our responsibility to figure this out, but maybe if we could talk with Mr. Corbin, and maybe his best avenue is a, to work with the school district, since it's an educational thing. But I'm a little cautious about putting the problem for teaching that class at the foot of the Libby Bowl Foundation and what they're trying to achieve. But maybe we can, maybe we can help him find a solution.
Absolutely.
Can I make a comment? Unfortunately, my, though I respect Mr. Corbin, there has been no follow-through. There's been requested dates. There's, there's nothing substantial that the Libby Bowl Foundation gets fined. You have it for this day. It's a very sort of nebulous, unclear complaint that he's had for five years. So I, I really do not think that if there was a, an actual request with actual dates, it would be denied in any size, shape, or form, so.
My suggestion is, Mr. Corbin, and I quote, says that he's been denied use of the Libby Bowl on every occasion. I would just suggest that he contact Steve and, and bring that to your attention and see what's going on there. And I'm sure that we can work something out.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
If that's essential, okay? Thank you very much, Mr. McClary. All right, we have a motion on the table in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Lara?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatch?
Yes. All right. Moving on to item number seven is the second reading, ordinance number 829, establishing a building appeals board.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This is a second reading, which normally would be on the consent calendar, but I think there was a little bit of confusion at the last meeting as to various things that we're talking about at the city council. And so I just wanted to provide an opportunity for a little clarification. The, the building appeals board is one of the techniques that we've talked about for resolving situations where there's a disagreement over a staff determination as it relates to building code matters. We've also talked about having an ombudsman that would assist with the, with the granny, with the second unit amnesty program. And that's a completely different thing from this. And the ombudsman is a program that we'll be developing soon to give people a no-risk place to go if they're interested in getting amnesty for a unit that they have. They can, they'll be able to talk to the ombudsman, determine what it would take to get their unit legalized, and then make an informed decision as to whether they want to go forward with it or not. So we are proceeding with the ombudsman idea. It's gonna take some work to put in place, and this is something a little bit different, an appeals board when there are disputes over building code interpretations.
Okay, thank you. What type of action do you need here, Mr. Clark?
So this is the second reading, and so the recommendation would be to ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance and approve a motion to waive further reading and adopt the ordinance.
Then I will entertain a motion to that effect.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion. I move that we adopt ordinance number 829, which would create the building appeals board and establish procedures for appeals to the board, and ask the city clerk to read the title by, read the ordinance by title only and waive further reading.
Second?
All right, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ordinance number 829, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ojai, California, amending Chapter 1 of Title IX of the Ojai Municipal Code related to the creation of the Building Appeals Board. Lara?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Slats?
Yes. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda, revisions to the city building heights limit. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mulane will be making this report.
Mr. Mulane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council members. So this is a, a discussion of, of council priority that you had previously discussed or previously asked staff to bring back, and that's to potentially revise a maximum building height citywide. And the council and the community expressed concerns with the three-story, 35-foot maximum height limit that was set forth in the special housing overlay as part of the 2006-2014 housing element adoption. And that was clearly, in my estimation, the most controversial aspect of, of the housing element, aside from the RENA numbers that we got stuck with. So there was a lot of discussion at, at that time of what can we do to change that, the, do we absolutely need to accept this three-story, 35-foot maximum height limit for the SPL overlay? And a lot of that discussion was actually before we had identified how many sites we needed and where those sites were gonna be, which we now know now. And many of those sites are city-owned. One site is the school district property, and then there's three other private, property, privately-owned sites. And we did indicate that we would do our best to, to present that to the state, HCD, the Housing and Community Development Department, to revisit that three-story, 35-foot height limit for the SPL overlay as part of this new housing element cycle that we've just initiated, the 2014 to 2021 housing element cycle. So we will be entertaining a discussion from the Planning Commission, the council, the public on, on how to go about this, and certainly draw upon the expert, expertise of our housing element consultant. But that's not what the council was, was interested in recently, when you talked about looking at this citywide. That's a broader aspect, and I, I think there's also desire to act more quickly on citywide issues rather than wait for the housing element discussion in, with this 2014-2021 housing element. So we brought this first as a discussion item for, for some input at this point. And if the city council wants to proceed, then we would initiate the public hearing process before both the Planning Commission and the city council, because this does involve a, a change to our zoning ordinance, and that requires public hearings before both those bodies. So the Planning Commission would be making a recommendation, and then the city council would be taking any action. So currently, the city's allowable building heights vary by zoning district. And height limits for residential zoning districts are included in it, in one of the tables of the zoning code, and I've included that as an attachment, that we have different height limits for the commercial and manufacturing districts, and those are in a second table, which is also attached to the staff report. And then we have height limits for the special purpose zoning districts in a third table. So those are your first three attachments to, to the staff report, and we can go through any of those in any more detail. But in general, either a height limit of 35 feet or 35 feet currently applies to the zoning districts in the city. And some of those zoning districts specify a maximum of two stories, many of them do not. In fact, it's just the residential zoning districts that say 30 feet maximum two-story, with the exception of the SPL overlay. Now, the zoning code also does, right now, provide a opportunity to entertain higher features above the maximum building height. And these are for architectural features such as chimneys, steeples, towers, cupolas, and similar features. But it does stipulate that those types of features cannot have habitable square footage associated with them. They're just decorative elements. And that, there's a, a specific section in the zoning code, which is Section 10-2.803, and that discusses what those exceptions involve. It provides a provision for limiting the amount, the facade. There's only a 25-foot allowance for these types of architectural features, and that's included, again, which we can get into in more detail if the council would like, as attachment D to the staff report. And as noted earlier, a proposed change to the SPL overlay of the 35-foot, three-story height maximum is anticipated to be part of the 2014-2021 housing element update process. And as for the specifics of revising the height limits for other zoning districts in the city, there are several options for the council's consideration. And one option is to establish citywide a 25-foot height limit, and that was the concept that was brought forth by one or two council members in previous discussions. Another approach would be to adjust the height limits on a zoning district by zoning district basis, or even on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis. And one of the outcomes of the neighborhood planning initiative that you just, as part of your budget approval, provided some fundings to, to start that process, we could look neighborhood by neighborhood and see if there's height limits that, that should be applicable to those different neighborhoods, realizing that certain neighborhoods may really benefit with a lower height limit, and other neighborhoods may, we may want to retain some flexibility for higher buildings. And it's in, important to note that, and this hasn't really entered the discussion yet, but we do have substantial design control in the, anything that's exceeding, that's, that's 25 feet or higher, right now on our books through our design review permit process. The Planning Commission reviews these projects, and they consider the aesthetics of the design, they consider the compatibility of the proposed height with the adjacent neighborhood, and they consider things such as view blockages and maintaining scenic vistas. So that's already going on right now, and that's been going on for, for years, as long as we've had the design review permit authority. And those decisions of the Planning Commission are appealable to the city council. So if some member of the public or an individual council member disagreed with a decision of the Planning Commission, you have an, an opportunity to bring that discussion to the council for a, a specific project. And I do want to point out that the Planning Commission has in the past expressed the opinion that reducing height limits would have a ramification on design flexibility for projects that might otherwise be found acceptable to them, and they, they would not like to be, have the box too constrained to not allow for that. Now, that said, we do, again, have that section in our zoning code that provides for some architectural features, but they are limited, and they do not allow the habitable square footage components of a building to be in that, above the maximum building height. But I did want to just note for the benefit of the discussion that we've had three recent projects that were reviewed by the, by the Planning Commission that involved components that exceeded the 25-foot height limit that, that we're talking about this evening. And I, in the staff report, I included some examples, these three examples. And the three examples were the Jim Miller's property at 510 East Ojai Avenue, which was approved several years ago, but the Planning Commission took another look at the, at the plans recently and found the design still acceptable and, and current. There was the remodel of the Ojai Valley Community Hospital, which had a tower feature that was about 33, well, it wasn't about, it was 33 and a half feet high. The Jim Miller project actually has a component right along Ojai Avenue that's a 34-foot peak height, and it's, it helps break up the facade of that, that, the existing building. And then the, the Wild Tennis Academy remodel has a peak height of about 30 feet, and they have substantial portions of that building that are, that are above 25 feet. So I, I just wanted to note those, because those are examples of projects that, that had review at the Planning Commission. They had, they had very favorable review by the Planning Commission, and those would have difficulties getting approved at this point if, if we institute a citywide change to the building height. And one of the issues there is that there are some buildings in town that exceed 25 feet, and so then you get into a legal non-conforming issue where if an owner wants to do additions to the structure, or they want to do substantial remodeling of the structure, then they have to conform to the non-conforming regulations in our code, which, as their intent, have a long-term objective of de, of doing away with the non-conformity. So over time, the thought is that eventually, everything would conform to that 25-foot height limit, if, if that's brought forward. And I, and I just also want to note that we don't drive by it every day, but there, there are several buildings at the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa that do exceed 25 feet. There, there are some that are, that are three and four stories high, and they're, you know, if the council wants to proceed with entertaining a citywide or mostly citywide height limit, you may want to consider a different height limit for, for that specific entity that, that really has quite a bit of structures that are, that exceed the 25-foot height limit. So in summary, the city council may want to provide specific direction to the Planning Commission about some of these issues, or the council can simply ask the Planning Commission to review the issues further and make recommendations to the council in conjunction with the consideration of the height limit. But it's just starting point for discussion. It's the first time that, that you all have had the benefit of some staff analysis of the, of the concept. So I'm happy to answer any questions and to get into some of the details of the attachments if the council would like this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mulane. Any questions of Mr. Mulane by the council?
Mayor Blatch, just for clarity, so, for example, if we look at one of these tables with the height limit, say 35 feet, table 2-9, the special purpose district, somebody could build up to 35, 35 feet and make it habitable in that instance? Or, I'm, I'm more, I'm more, because there's, there's other, like this two-story with 30 feet for the residentials. What's the difference between that and the special feature that could be 35 feet? I mean, because it's only five feet difference, so.
Well, the, the importance with these tables is whether or not they, in addition to setting a height limit, also set a number of stories that's allowed. In general, a 35-foot structure can support three stories very readily. A 30-foot structure would be a little challenging, especially if it's a, a commercial use on the front, on the ground floor. Oftentimes, the first floors is, is, they want to be higher than 10 feet, and then you get into less opportunity to go up from there. So there is a distinction between 35 feet and 30 feet in terms of accommodating three-story
Other comments or questions of Mr. Mulane? Anyone from the public wishing to address the council on this matter? Sure, come forward.
Leslie Ferro, 209 East Eucalyptus in Ojai. I was just reading a little bit about this on the website, and what I'm kind of hearing is that you're considering allowing a hotel have a 35-foot structure but not a hospital. And I think in terms of what serves a community better, I think a hospital might serve a community better than a hotel. Granted, I work for a hospital down in Ventura, so I might be a little bit biased, but I'm just thinking, hospital, hotel, just my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like Mr. Mulane to clarify that. Referring to the hospital, he was referring to structures that already exist. Is that correct?
It's not the remodel of the Ojai Hospital?
No.
Sure, I, I could address that and clarify it a little bit more. I mentioned those three projects that were recently looked at by the Planning Commission and approved, because they are examples of projects that did exceed 25 feet in, in height. So we're, the hospital project's already been approved, and that's, that's, they're actually getting close to getting their final plan check approved by the state office that, that handles the building plan check function for hospital and other institutions. So that, what, what would happen if the... So that, what would happen if the height limit were to change for that zoning district or that area is that that structure would become a legal nonconforming structure. And then there are issues with additions and other, it does constrain the ability of an owner to make certain improvements to a structure if it's a legal nonconforming structure.
Okay, but to make sure that I'm clear. When we, when we referred to the hotel, we were referring to structures that have already been built, they're already in place. And when we were referring to the hospital and their height, they already have their plans approved. So would that impact the hospital? Are these three examples you?
It does not impact their current approval that they received recently, just last few months ago from the Planning Commission, but it would constrain future renovations or remodeling that they may need to do down the line, or additions to the hospital.
Anyone else in the public? No? Council, any more questions?
Yes, I guess, Mayor Blatch, I do have some concerns. I know that this came about because we're really trying to avoid big buildings that could exceed, that are three stories because of our open space. But by doing so, we're gonna, I just, I look at it and I see the recommendation of Planning Commission where they're talking about flexibility and having a designer, if it's 30 feet, it's a little bit above 25 feet, it could add some ability to have some nice architect. And if we put a 25 limit, is that really gonna, are we really doing a benefit for our community or not doing a benefit for our community? And that's my only concern. I could understand that we're trying to limit the number of big buildings. Either way, I think Ojai is well-known for that. But just the ability to have that flexibility when our residents are trying to build something, it just concerns me, especially since, my understanding is that we're not trying to limit their capacity, we're trying to limit the big, big-time builders.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If we were to establish a 25-foot height limit, there's, is there anything to prevent somebody to come, from coming forward with a project that is higher than that and asking for approval, an exception?
Well, we don't have, the only thing we have in our books right now is a variance process for that. And that would, that's an avenue. It gives you a discretionary review. It's still in the Planning Commission's jurisdiction. It's still subject.
So we could still create the flexibility that way, by allowing the potential of a variance be allowed to go higher. And then if the Planning Commission and the city council feel that it is beneficial for the community, then they can say, yeah, in this situation, like the hospital, we absolutely see that it's appropriate. But in the, so instead of going backwards, we go from the top down, we go from the bottom up. So that is, that's a mechanism for allowing flexibility, isn't it?
I will say that variances have a way of becoming precedent-setting, and it's very difficult to deny one when you've just recently approved another one. We have, there's plenty of jurisdictions that really are very reluctant to give out any variances. And this came up in your joint meeting with the Planning Commission. So it, you know, I didn't belabor the issue in the staff report, but I do want to just emphasize that there is a design review permit process. It's discretionary. They have the ability to say no. In every case, that they are uncomfortable with the architecture, or they feel there's view blockages, there's CEQA required for a design review permit. So if we felt that there were, that a...
Wait, excuse me, timeout. CEQA not on a ministerial?
No, there's CEQA on design review permits that go before the Planning Commission.
But the design review permit comes for a two-story project or higher, correct? Singles, oh, they're not, I thought it was ministerial, you wouldn't have to have a CEQA.
No, the only thing that is ministerial right now for these types, these, you know, buildings exceeding 25 feet?
Right.
Is the SPL overlay. And even that, as we've gone through, has lots and lots of design guidance, and that you can, that the Planning Commission could still deny a project. So even that's quasi-discretionary. That's probably not the right legal term, so.
So the three projects you're talking about are commercial projects. So there's, like you said in the staff report, there's no reason we can't have different areas of the community where we have different height restrictions.
That's absolutely correct.
So it could, we could determine that we feel that we are okay with 30 feet on Ojai Avenue for commercial, and 25 feet elsewhere, or something like that, could we not?
You could certainly do that. And, you know, one other thing that I didn't mention, I'd just like to add just for the benefit of the discussion, one thing that we, as far as I know, we haven't done on a regular basis in Ojai are story polling. So if there are, if there are, there are very visible projects that there is a proposal for a bulky building, or a building that exceeds 25 feet, we could administratively say, in all those cases, we want, we want story polls to be installed so that the Planning Commission and the public and the council has a benefit of seeing, seeing the actual, getting a much better feel for what the visual impact would be.
I agree completely. I think we should implement, we should have that part of policy for, with story polls, absolutely. Okay, that's all for now. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of comments. First of all, I don't think establishing a 25-foot height limit is a cure-all for the city of Ojai. We have, if we get into variances, that defeats the entire purpose, because we can't deny on one hand and approve on the other hand. And I don't see Ojai as a city where we can put a 25-foot height limit and have it work. And, you know, it depends on, I'm assuming 25 feet means from the ground to the top of the roof. Well, I could build a 25-foot structure, but use the grading such that it actually raises 35 feet. I, you know, there's so many things, I don't think that we can just apply 25 feet and expect it to work for the city of Ojai.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
On 8-5, under, under... Under 8-5 and residential district general development standards, one thing that I think we should look at is that in the 9,600-square-foot property size, 80 feet wide, the property's 80 feet wide, they can go three, 30 feet. That's 15, and it could maximum of two stories, that's 15-foot ceilings in a house. And an 80-foot-wide lot is pretty darn narrow. And that's when you get into the situation where you have a little cottage, like what you live in, Carlin, and somebody decides they're going to put 30 feet right next door to you, looming over your house. You had that happen, exactly. So I, that's why I think that we should really seriously consider going to 25 feet, at least in residential, to at least minimize that kind of oppressiveness, particularly in an 80, in a narrow lot, which there's a tremendous number of narrow lots in the city of Ojai. My lot's 50 feet wide that I live in, and most of the downtown courts, 50 feet wide. So when you start, you start getting things like you have down in Redondo Beach and Manhattan Beach, where you get these mega mansions next, or down on the lanes in Ventura at the beach, where you have the little beach cottage, and then you have the 35-foot monstrosity next door. And I just think that that is something that we really need. We need to decide as a community what we want to be. Do we want urbanization, or do we want to maintain our village character? And urbanization comes, height is a real major force in urbanization. And I just think that it would be very, very beneficial as a community to at least put our one at 25 feet, to eliminate that sort of oppressive development that impacts a neighborhood, a neighbor severely. And it can impact your, the sunlight that you receive in your home, the sunlight you receive in your garden, the sense of privacy that you have in your home, especially in a narrow lot that's 50 feet wide.
I understand your intent and everything you're saying, and I agree with it. And what I say, what I'm saying is, I don't believe establishing a 25-foot ceiling is the answer. I don't think it's the cure-all. I don't think it's going to keep, let me finish. I don't think it's going to keep the village atmosphere of the city of Ojai. We already have the limit of 35 feet. I think it's more about how the property or how the project is laid out. We all want the same thing as far as protecting our views, et cetera, et cetera. My comment is, I don't think establishing a 25-foot limit for building in the city of Ojai is going to cure it, is going to cure what you're trying to cure.
I, I'm not trying to cure anything. I'm just saying 35 feet and two stories is, what, 18-foot ceilings? 25 feet is 12-foot ceilings in a home. It's sufficient for two stories. It's not, it's not necessary to go beyond 25 feet in an R1 area for a two-story house. It's just not necessary.
Okay, my comments are from my point of view. They're really not up to be debated.
Yeah.
So what I'd like to hear from the other council people is your point of view, your point of view, not necessarily to debate mine.
I have a couple of comments. One is, I can't see where a variance is a proper vehicle on a, on a height limitation. I just can't, I can't even imagine being able to come up with findings to that effect. I just can't. Do you agree with that?
I was going to make a comment earlier, Mr. Mayra, yes, thank you, that the variances are supposed to be only granted, and this community's been awfully good over the years, that granting variance is based upon a physical characteristic of the property that's preventing the property owner from utilizing the property to the fullest. So a variance for height still belongs, if there's some unique piece of property, it's so steep or something, you can't, you know, you can't, with the application of whatever height limit is, it gives a, it can't be applied equally. So, now, there are, having provisions in some communities to do basically a code waiver, it's a different entitlement. But variance wouldn't be it, and as it is, I had two other thoughts. One is, I think when the issue about the McMans, which is not yet an issue in the community, is McMansion-type issues, those are best handled and very successfully handled instead with building heights, with building volume and floor area restrictions. So that you force the property owner into smaller footprints, because you could be otherwise a big square box with a flat roof. So when you have these issues, the beach city, the issues in the beach cities where they don't want to do that, is we do a foyer ratio or lot coverage standard, so that you just force the building down to a manageable size, which you already have that discretion under design review to a great degree. The other thought I was going to give is perhaps the issue about dealing with modifications or waivers of the building height, that could also be addressed in some, maybe some tweaking of our design review standards. Because if that was the issue, because it's more about the qualitative nature of the construction, not the quantitative nature that becomes objectionable when you get too big of a building. Usually, it's the bulk of the building, not necessarily the height. A very narrow peaked roof, you know, maybe 32 feet high, it's on a, because it's got a, particular architecture is, has a very high peaked roof versus a big square building with a flat roof, can be the same exact building height and completely different character of the two structures.
I tend to, I tend to agree with Councilwoman Clapp with regard to the 25-foot height limitation in the R1 zone. I really do. I think our biggest concern in this is the potential for three stories and 35 feet. And the other thing is, is that design review is only as good as the people that are doing the review. And if you have a design review in which the, the appearance of the building is nice, but you're given the opportunity to go 35 feet, and it is 35 feet and it looks nice, for instance, this Miller property, I don't know about the perspective, because I can't, I don't have a good perspective on, on the way this drawing is, because it's kind of drawn, you know, off into the distance. And this looks like this building is, is three times higher, at least twice as high and twice as wide, and I don't think that's probably correct. You could have a situation on Ojai Avenue at 35 feet where the design review body approved it, as they may have here, where we, as the city council, think that's too high. And the only way you're going to be able to limit the design review for a building being too high is to set a limit of a lower height. So I think that's what we're trying to do. And I'm not sure how we get there, but that's, that's kind of the flavor in which I brought this, Councilwoman Clapp and I brought this back to the council for further, further discussion, because that was our concern. But I do, I don't see a problem with 25 feet in a residential area. Do you see any problems with that, Mr. Malane? I mean, where is that? What limitations are we doing if we, what design limitations are we doing by limiting the height to 25 feet in a residential area?
I think the only, the only issue is the one that the city attorney raised, where you have certain types of roof, certain types of architecture that do require a high-pitched roof, and that, so that type of architecture probably wouldn't be able to fit in a 25-foot height limit. The other issue that I see, and if you're talking single-family residential, I think that's, which would be the R1 and the RO zone districts. So that may be an easier sell to the state HCD than if you try to impose that on the R2 or the R3. So, you know, my recommendation on that is if you want to adjust the residential, I would say RO, all the various RO's zone districts and R1 would probably be fairly safe with the state. Beyond that would be a little bit of a, of a battle.
Mr. Mayor, I think that's a very good suggestion on Mr. Malane's part. It's very important to have the floor area and the lot size. Make sure that, that's really prevents mega mansions. I've been to areas where they're just, you know, whatever the maximum is you can allow, and the entire lot is filled with building. But that stopped by having, you could only fill up, what's, for R1, it's like 60% or 40% of the lot or something. Don't, we do have that in our zoning, how big the building can be in terms of square footage of the building as square footage of the lot. I know we do. So that's extremely important. The architectural thing's interesting, because if you point out, as you said, certain designs would have maybe a very steep roof, but they don't really block a lot of light and stuff because they are so steep. So it'd be nice to keep that flexibility as far as architectural styles. How many are designed that way and what would be required? You know, that's tricky. I know the, like the racket club, they have a very steep roof on the top, and that's at least 35 feet. But the building, it goes like this. And they sort of have three stories, because they have like a basement area, and they have the first floor and the second floor. So they really are a three-story, but, and it looks pretty big, except that steep roof is the only part that really goes probably to 35 feet. And that's not R1, that's Fox Street. So I think what I'm hearing, and I'm agreeing with, with R0 and R1, 25 feet, with, if the architectural, if the design of the house calls for a very steep roof, and with the design review permit, I don't know, I said, I'd like to avoid variances, too. You're asking for trouble. But that steep roof, there's no, nothing there. It's just part of the design of, like a Cape Cod, perhaps, or a certain houses. I don't know how many we even have in the city like that. Is there any way to do that without having to require a variance? I don't know.
Mr. Mayor?
Isn't it through the design standards you were talking about?
I just, I was thinking, we could possibly put in design review, that the, in a design review permit, that height could be exceeded by some order of magnitude, based upon a unique architecture as established, as found by the Planning Commission.
Right. Like only a certain percentage of that particular structure can go above this certain height?
Correct. We already have that exception for chimneys and copulas and things like that. that. We could prob, I think, you know, again, the planning commission, if you want to go forward, this goes back to the staff and planning commission, they could probably noodle through that and come up with something, so, you know, that one
One little area.
French provincial, whatever it is.
And I think that addresses Mayor Protem's concerns also about the style, or the lot configuration, or whatever. The slope needs to be considered, you know, not a very super hard and fast, but. So, we don't end up with those blocks like this? Yeah, yeah. Maybe a certain percentage can go higher to, say, thirty feet? Because the architecture of that building, right. Say, maybe you just take it from twenty-five and go to a maximum of thirty, with only a certain percentage of the design being above that certain amount. I'm good with that. And then, what about the, what about the VMU and the commercial thirty or thirty-five?
Any thoughts on that from the council?
Do we have to address that tonight, or can we do a little bit more?
Well, I think, I thought, I think the outcome of tonight's discussion is gonna be to send it back to the planning commission for, with our, with our suggestions noted, that we really would like the R-one and R-O zones to be a twenty-five-foot height limitation with certain exceptions, depending on architectural design, and subject to a design review.
But then...
You know, I think it would be anyway, because you have to go to design review for two-story anyway.
And the height limit, pardon me, and the height limit of a certain percentage, if the exception is only a certain percentage?
As an idea of doing that.
Not the exception for the entire building architecturally, but the exception because of certain, a certain percentage of the building, be it twenty-five percent, fifteen, thirty, or whatever.
Correct. And the planning commission can
Right.
Can deliberate on that. As far as the other zones, you know, we would like to, to bring it down somewhat, but I'd like to get the planning commissions to put on that as well, with the idea that maybe there's a way of doing it at thirty feet, with the same type of limited exceptions.
Yeah, like, how high on the new hospital drawing on page eight nineteen? How, do you know offhand, Mr. Mullein, how high the bell is and how high the tower is? And if you look at it, Councilwoman Smith, the majority of it is a single story. Yeah, yeah. It's a very minimal part of the structure that is actually higher. And it's only the bell and the tower that are high? That is three, yeah. Those could be thirty-five feet easily. I don't know what the final height is. Yeah, I think it's a reasonable building.
Tower's thirty, thirty-three and a half feet high. The bell and the building are all right around twenty-five.
Uh-huh. They've been real sensitive to the community's feel, I think, with their design. Yeah, I don't want to have to limit them to twenty-five feet. No, I think that they've done a great job, and it's been really well done. Okay, I think we made progress on this.
You have enough to go on, Mr. Mullein?
The only other thing, it might be helpful to get your input on this evening, if you're able to do this. One of the issues that I've had to, had to sort through is, there are lots of folks that want to do pretty large, single-story residences, with very high walls, pretty high roof peaks. And the way our zoning code table works right now, a two-story structure goes to the planning commission for a design review permit. But a single-story structure that just happens to have, you know, enormous cathedral ceilings and a very high roof, I've actually made an interpretation that if anything above, I think it's twenty feet, even if it's single-story, still goes to planning commission, because you're still dealing with a size, bulk, and scale of a two-story, even though they're not developed as a two-story. So, when, when this goes through the public hearing process, I would like to clarify that in the zoning code, to set a height limit for single-story residences that do not have to go to planning commission for design review. And again, it's somewhere between fifteen and twenty feet, depending on the context. But anything twenty feet or above, including just a peak of a roof, I've referred to the planning commission, even if it's a single-story. And we've documented that as a zoning ordinance interpretation, so that we're consistently applying that.
I would go along with that, so, if my colleagues go along with that, I have, I think that's good planning and good, good design planning.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, right now, residential units could potentially be a single-story thirty-five feet high.
Yeah, sure.
And it would never go before any kind of design review.
Yeah.
Thirty feet high, right?
Or thirty feet high.
Right.
So, I think that's clearly something that we need to close up that loophole. Okay, so, whatever, whatever staff believes is the appropriate, fifteen or twenty feet, whatever is the amount that you would normally have to go for a two-story approval, if it's single-story and it's above that, the single-story should go to that as well.
Okay, that's helpful. I think the planning commission's on board with that as well.
Thank you. Do you have enough, anything else you need?
No, that was very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number nine, is the designation of voting delegate and alternate for the 2013 League of California Cities Annual Conference in September. Mr. Clark?
I guess, first of all, we'd like to find out which council members are planning on attending the meeting, but we do have the ability to have a voting and an alternate, a voting delegate and alternate among those who are attending.
I thought we did this already.
It was last year.
That was last year.
And you're not going to?
Doesn't seem possible.
Did last year or? September twentieth, oh, boy. We have a, we're dark on September twenty-third, so I assume a lot of people will be out of town. But, anyway.
Any council members signed up for, to go to the conference?
No, but I'm, I'm thinking about going.
Good.
Yeah. I haven't, I haven't been for, I didn't go last year, I went the year before. So, I'm willing to go, and if you want me to be the voting delegate, fine. And if someone else wants to go as an alternate, that's great.
Mr. Clark, are you attending?
I will be attending, yes.
See, there we have it.
I, I wanna, I'm planning to attend, too. I could be the alternate, though.
Great, suddenly we have a whole crew. In fact, everybody's going.
I do want to go ahead and set the reservations, because there's a price break if we do it, I think, by the end of the week.
All right. All right, we're gonna adjourn as the Ojai City Council, and reconvene as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency. And I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Second?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Smith? I mean, Blatz.
Yes.
Sorry.
We're gonna, we're gonna adjourn as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency, reconvene as the city council, and I'll see if there's any reports from any council members. Council Member Laura, anything to report tonight?
No.
Councilwoman Clapp? Councilwoman Smith?
I wanted to talk about the fireworks on Saturday night. I was very pleased, Chief Kennedy, to see that letter from Pete Els, the CEO of the Ojai Valley Inn. Apparently, they got a lot of people on Saturday night saying, what's with this, all this fireworks? And they went on for ten minutes. I was at another wedding that night, and was saying, what in the world is it? And I got angry. I said, what's going on? We have a dry season now. And got home and found my poor dog shivering in the bathtub, along with probably half of the animals in Ojai. And basically, Mr. Els' letter said, they're not, just not gonna allow that anymore. And of course, the way the wedding planner had presented the fireworks to the hotel, it was gonna be much simpler and much shorter. So, I think we've solved that problem. But I don't know how many official complaints came in, but boy, did my phone run off the hook, and a lot of people were very worried about their animals. And so, I think Mr. Els' situation, his reply was perfect. How about you, Chief Kennedy? You have any feedback on?
We didn't get any complaints that I know about the PD. We weren't involved in this. I was made aware of it, though, in the city staff meeting that this was gonna occur. So, my deputies were briefed on it. But as far as noise complaints or anything of that nature, no.
Did your officers go out, or they knew they had a permit, so?
They knew they had a special use permit, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would have, well, again, they'd have to put it in the newspaper or something, that there will be some fireworks. But it went on for a long time, so, I didn't know what to make of it. I'm done.
Mayor Protem Strobel, anything?
Nothing to report.
I, too, had several phone calls Saturday night at my residence with regard to the fireworks. And most of the people were concerned about animals, for the most part. And they wished that they had had some sort of a warning that it was gonna happen, and it, and they didn't receive that warning. And I think in the future, if there is some sort of special use permit like that, at least we ought to have some way of notifying, whether they're notified or not. If we could say it was special notice in the paper or something, it would probably help, because there is a, there's a high degree of anxiety that animals experience. And if you, I know on Fourth of July, people take special precaution, and if all of a sudden, out of the clear blue, you have a full-blown firework display, you can't do that.
You should see the line on the Monday before July fourth of people getting tranquilizers for their animals at the vets.
I'll also say, though, that a number of people contacted me, saying that they thought it was wonderful, that they were enjoying dinner outside, and all of a sudden, they were, they were entertained by a fireworks display. And that included some people on country clubs. So, yeah, there was, there was probably an equal number that said they enjoyed the firework display, not knowing about it as the... Right, no. But I do sympathize with those people that did. So, I hope that we can take care of that the next time. I have a letter that I received from the city of Moore Park. I think the entire council got it, but I just thought that I'd, I'd, for the benefit of the public, the city of Moore Park is celebrating its thirtieth anniversary. And the city council cordially invites anyone to attend a reception at six-thirty PM on July seventeen, two thousand thirteen, followed by the regular city council meeting at seven PM. We welcome your attendance and would appreciate receiving a letter of recognition, proclamation, resolution, or certificate of recognition from presumably the city of Ojai. Please contact me, and it's written by the city clerk of Moore Park. I didn't know whether the, whether the council had any desire to, for our city manager to just send over a congratulatory letter for their thirtieth anniversary. I think that would probably be a nice gesture. And also, Mr. Clark and I were at the dedication in Libby Park on Sunday with regard to the new Ojai Preserve that the, that the Ojai Land Conservancy was able to purchase. And that was a nice function. And I made comments, and I had a proclamation for them that they appreciated. So, I, I enjoyed being able to do that. Other than that, I have nothing else. Staff, Mr. Clark?
Well, I did happen to have breakfast this morning with Mr. Els. And other than fireworks, which I apologize for the city's part in that approval, other than our agreement that that probably wasn't the best move, he reported that their, their booking pace is very strong. They're basically booked up for the summer, which has not been the case recently, and they're running quite a bit ahead of what they had in the same months in the prior years, and they're booked out quite a distance. So, that bodes very well both for them and for us.
Good, excellent. Mr. Fletcher? Chief, how are you?
Good.
Anything for us tonight?
Just have a safe fall day, speaking of fireworks, you know, we'll have extra deputies out for Fourth of July for both the parade and the fireworks show to keep things safe. So, have fun, but be safe.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mullein?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, I'll just briefly mention that we, there's a little change of pace up at the Club Vista Park. There's a couple that met up there years ago. They're gonna have a wedding there this Saturday. So, if you see some excitement at the park, this, at the Club Vista Park, which is unusual this Saturday, that's a wedding, little change of pace. And then, secondly, that Libby Park this weekend is at the, is the Lavender Festival. So, that's an annual event. It's gotten quite a bit of attendance now. So, that should be fun.
That the sink will be put into the Libby Bowl, you know, office building there for events like the Lavender Festival, who had to rent a prep sink or something. That seems like a good improvement that we should have anyway, so.
I think this is the first year they had a problem with that. It's, it's always been an exemption, but there was a new supervisor at the environmental health department, so became a problem this year.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grant. Ms. Mayers?
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. I just want to remind the employee potluck luncheon tomorrow, this Thursday, as I mentioned last week. That's for Donna Logan and Brian Meadows' retirement luncheon. That'll be at noon.
I'll invite her. If you can make it, it would be wonderful.
Yes.
July ninth.
Thank you. Thank you for that reminder. It's, Ms. Logan's been with the city for eight years.
Yes, and Brian, yeah. Will Brian be there?
We're sorry to see.
Brian will be there, too?
We're sorry to see her go.
Yep.
Madam City Clerk, anything?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. Anything from the council? Anything further?
It'll be about noon, probably, right?
No? All right, we stand adjourned.